Next item is a motion to resolve into special closed meeting for the items on the agenda and on table. Can I have a motion, please? Counselor Whitmarsh, second by Counselor Qualley. Anything else, Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to add an intergovernmental.
Intergov, this is Richter. Okay. Anything else? Okay, with that, all those in favor? Posed carried. Thank you.
I think she's back later. She's, um... I think it was this morning and she's on a ferry coming back, I think.
All right. I would now like to reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Langley Council. And the next item on the agenda are presentations. And we have a presentation from staff regarding our control of nuisance animals policy. Welcome here.
Your worship, just as Mr. Larson is getting prepared, just to inform council that this is in relation with item F1. That's on council's agenda. And to accompany Mr. Larson is Mr. Rule, who is the manager of our engineering construction department, as well as Mr. Sandra Andresi, who is also supporting Mr. Larson in the presentation.
Thank you. Welcome here.
Your worship, members of council. As Ramon mentioned, my name's Kevin Larson. I'm the manager of Water Resources and Environment. Today's presentation is related to item F1, as Ramon mentioned, on today's agenda, the Control of Nuisance Animals Policy Update, and more specifically, as it relates to beaver management and how the township addresses beaver issues within our municipality. So the township, as you are well aware, has numerous wetlands, approximately sixteen hundred kilometers of watercourses, much of which is located on private property. So these conditions make excellent habitat for the North American beaver. Beavers build dams to create habitat for themselves, and in doing so, they also create excellent habitat for fish and other wildlife. However, they can also create prob... This can also create problems for others. This would include flooding, damage to infrastructure and public works, such as culverts, roads, those types of things, loss of trees, damage to private and public property. And some of these issues can cause a public safety concern as well. The management of beavers, their dens and dams, is therefore necessary, a necessary part of municipal operations, and is accounted for both proactively through capital works and stream restoration projects, and reactively as the needs arise. So today, I'll begin by providing a brief regulatory requirement lesson, I guess, and then I'll briefly speak about how the township incorporates beaver management into our capital works projects. And then I'll hand it over to Aaron behind me, who will talk about our best management practices and guidelines that the township implements. So the management... So the management of beavers and their dams is regulated by both the province and the federal government. Some of those regulations include, or legislation pieces include, the Wildlife Act, the Water Sustainability Act, and the Federal Fisheries Act. In cases where beavers are affecting irrigation and drainage or causing property damage, the township can be deemed to have lawful authority to undertake beaver and beaver dam control activities, such as dam removal or dam modification. We follow the province and the fed's best management practices. Includes various things, including environmental notifications, monitoring, reporting, and completing the works within the windows that are set out by the regulatory authorities, so at certain times of the year. In all cases, the township explores best management methods, which will be discussed very shortly. So as I mentioned, capital works drainage improvement projects in or around watercourses always have an environmental component, always. This includes protection of fish and wildlife. So in many cases, an area is home to beavers or its potential beaver habitat. As such, these projects include beaver management during the planning, the design, and the construction phase. Some of the management tools utilized include culvert sizing and design, even orientation of the culvert, tree protection, and selective riparian restorations. So for example, certain species that the beavers are less partial to are planted in these areas, or sacrificial plants are planted, such as willow stakings. Over the years and decades, the township has also undertaken projects, multiple projects in fact, to restore watercourses to a more naturalized state. These projects not only improve conveyance of stormwater, but bring back environmental features that were once lost. In most cases, capital works projects and restoration projects have a long-term monitoring component. This allows our staff and our consultants to return to these past project sites to ensure the works are completed, that are completed or working as intended and maintained into the future. And just a brief example of one of these projects is our North Creek Restoration. So since 2006, we've been restoring various sections of North Creek through the Glover Road lowland area. And you can see on the slide the number of monitoring sites that we have there. And regular maintenance of these restoration projects are required due to beaver activity despite, despite the planning and the design that have gone in. So tree caging, fencing, select species, those types of things. As recently as 2014, we had an environmental consultant complete a beaver impact assessment and management plan for this, these right of ways. This involved assessing and mapping beaver activity and damage caused by the beavers, and recommending restoration and beaver protection plans. More recently, in the past few years, we've worked collaboratively with others. This was a pilot project that we undertook with help from an environmental consulting firm and in conjunction with the Association for the Protection of Fur-Bearing Animals. The location is known as Horn Pit, which is approximately the 2700 block of 200th Street. It's a former township gravel pit that's used for various purposes today, such as storing spoil material when ditching occurs, that type of thing. The objective of the project was to reduce impacts from beavers on municipal operations in the property, so flooding of roads on the property, flooding of storage areas, felling of trees, that type of thing. But more importantly, to develop and demonstrate alternatives to traditional management of beavers, provide a framework towards an adaptive management approach to be utilized to alleviate associated flooding and issues in other areas in the township of Langley. The work included mapping the site, taking an inventory of the damage, and providing recommendations for long-term and maintenance. So this site employed a number of techniques, including tree wrapping, pond levelers, which you'll hear more about very shortly. And the other thing that this, we tried on this site was we made certain areas of the site more attractive to the beavers, so they would stay away from the areas that we were working in. So for example, a dam was actually built on one side of the site to track beaver activity, so they would stay away from the other side of the site where there was municipal operations happening. So the township also manages beavers on public lands on a non-project-related basis. This responsibility lies primarily with our public works departments, with assistance from the Water Resource and Environment Department. So at this time, I'll just introduce Aaron Rule, our manager of Engineering and Construction Services.
Good afternoon. So flooding of municipal, oh, sorry. Flooding of municipal and private property and damage to culverts, roads, dikes, has resulted from activities of animals such as beavers and muskrats. With the, so flooding, yeah, sorry. With the township's large area and rural settings, our public works crews are required to manage beaver activity on a regular basis at multiple sites. Policy 05-205 and the associated guidelines developed over the years set out the framework for staff's beaver management activities, which include monitoring water levels for acceptable flooding, installing fences or barriers around culverts and drains, wrapping wire mesh around trees, installing pond levelers and dams. Beaver management activity in the township is a progressive regime, which begins with the hand removal of dams without trapping or machinery. So this slide shows the active beaver management sites we have in the township. As you can see, beaver management practices are undertaken across the township. Our parks operations and stormwater maintenance crew and public works are tasked with the beaver management. So currently in the township, we have twenty-three sites, which are shown in yellow on the map, where staff are monitoring and/or removing dams by hand. We have eight sites shown in red, where crews have installed pond levelers, two of which were installed in collaboration with the Association for the Protection of Fur-Bearing Animals, who I will now refer to as the APFA. And we have twenty-four sites, which are shown in blue, where the township has completed tree wrapping either as part of operation and maintenance or capital projects over the years. So monitoring and hand removal of dams is done as a first step, and also where we can accept some level of flooding. So these photos are a few examples from around the township where we do hand removal and monitoring. So the first photo on the left is in Walnut Grove, where we hand removed dams and we've accepted a level of flooding. We've also got a pond leveler downstream, which I'll show you on the next slide. The photo in the upper right corner is on McKinnon Crescent, where we had a history of beavers plugging the inlet and causing the road to flood on a regular basis, until staff modified the inlet, added the three, you can see the three grates, and installed an emergency overflow, which now protects the road, so we allow the beaver to build his dam, and staff will go in and knock, knock down the dam as needed. And the third photo in the lower right corner is on 232nd Street in South Langley, where beaver dams are on private property, so staff are strictly monitoring the area and allowing for some flooding of our roadside ditch, but we're in communication with the property owners to ensure that the water doesn't come up on 232nd Street and cause a safety hazard. Pond levelers. So pond levelers are utilized and found to be most effective where there are low flows and a large body of water upstream. Pond levelers do restrict flow through the device, so this must be taken into account when determining their suitability. And sites where levelers are used, some level of flooding must be acceptable, which does not pose a risk to property or safety. So here again, I've got some examples from around the township. The upper-left corner is the pond leveler installed at the Horn Pit by the APFA in 2013, and cost approximately $500. The photo below it is our most recent pond leveler, installed by staff last summer, and cost approximately $3,000 to install. And finally, the picture on the right is our staff installing a pond leveler at the Walnut Grove site I spoke about before. So beavers will also bypass these pond levelers by building dams either upstream or downstream within this channel. And the inlets and outlets can become blocked, as you can see on the upper photo, if you look at the outlet of that pipe. So staff are having to go and maintain these on a regular basis, which typically is on a monthly basis. And finally, we've got tree wrapping. So tree wrapping is used to limit beaver supply of dam materials, protect new trees from being eaten, and protect, protect large trees from being fallen by beavers, causing potential property damage and harm to people. So these photos have been taken around the township where we've done various sites of tree wrapping. One photo to note is on the lower-left, where you can see a determined beaver who is dug under our wire fencing to work on the protected trees. So... That is the be, the little brown dot there, yeah.
You had a clear sight.
Yeah. So finally, when management efforts I've shown you are unable to prevent or control the potential property damage and risk to public safety, trapping may be deemed necessary as a last resort. So where trapping is deemed necessary, the township retains services of a qualified, trained, professional contractor who follows the applicable regulations and industry standards. So finally, I'll end with a photo of the Bedford Pond, Pond Leveler, where, which was installed with, in conjunction with the Association for the Protection of Fur-Bearing Animals in 2014. Thank you.
Great, thank you. There were some questions from council? Counsel Arnesson?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm not sure who wants to answer the questions, because you've jointly sort of got different topic areas. So whichever would be most appropriate to you to chair. I was wondering about, I believe it's Mr. Larson that mentioned the environmental notifications that precede your work. Is that something that you do prior to trapping generally?
For trapping, no, we don't, we don't need to put in an environmental notification.
Okay, well...
That's for work in and around a watercourse.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay. So just general works in and around, then does that mean the property, properties located in that area get some kind of notification? That's what you're doing, so they know?
No, this is a notification to the province and federal government.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand.
To do with the various acts and regulations.
Because that was one of the things that came as a result of this conversation, is that people in the area wouldn't necessarily know if there was trapping going on in the area? Okay, thank you. My second question is, I'm not sure if you're able to answer this, but I'm just looking at this, and the immediate concern was in the Gloucester area. So I'm just wondering if you, in your capacity, could sort of suggest why it was that trapping was resorted to in that particular situation as opposed to other options?
Staff had gone through and tried the hand removal, and the beavers were rebuilding the dams fairly quickly, and we didn't feel that pond levelers were an acceptable device to use there.
So that's your professional expertise, and then...
That's with staff, yes, our field staff.
Yeah, I understand. And the other reference then was to a report, the Beaver Impact Assessment, that had been done in the township, the Adaptive Management Pilot Project. And so I'm wondering whether or not that could be considered for the Gloucester area, to integrate that into the Integrated Stormwater Management Plan?
We would, I'd have to look at that one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I think you partially answered part of my question here. Like, it was the beaver in Gloucester that caused all this outcry about beavers. Now, did township hire the trapper that went into that Gloucester property, or was it?
Yeah, that's, that is our contractor, yes.
So it is our contractor. And I think you just said you couldn't use levelers there to, to solve the problem?
We didn't. Didn't feel it would be an appropriate measure.
It wouldn't be appropriate? And why was that deemed not appropriate there? Because it's a pretty big area.
Yeah. It's, I'd have to, it was our field staff who made the call, so...
Okay. And what about tree wrapping? Could they have looked at tree wrapping?
I believe there has been some tree wrapping in the area.
Yeah.
Because there were some, some trees were being fallen on 56th Avenue.
Okay. And the other, the major concern that I've had all the way along about this is about the humane trapping of beavers, and the trap that was used wasn't humane. So are there humane ways to trap and dispose of beavers without them having to have their necks broken?
My understanding of that trap is allowed in the trapping and hunting regulations, as per the Wildlife Act, so...
Okay, well...
We defer to our contractor.
Okay, but even if it's allowed, does, does our contractors, or do our contractors have other forms of trapping that would be less inhumane?
There is live trapping, which is an option, yeah.
Live trapping? Yeah, okay. And then the beaver could maybe be euthanized.
Euthanized off-site or relocated, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fox?
Your worship, could I just provide a bit of a confirmation on two, two topics? One is the, the activities or the, the monitoring and control that staff undertook in Gloucester in particular. The, the fact is that, as Mr. Rule stated, that the construction of dams was occurring faster than we could do hand removal. And in terms of the employment or deployment of other measures, it was deemed to be not practical, given the size of the lakes, as well as the impact, or the potential impact and liability of, on our existing infrastructure, as well as on, on private property. So that was the consideration that staff undertook in determining whether live trapping could, or actually trapping could occur or not. As far as live trapping, other than, I guess, euthanasia, I just want council to be aware that relocation is subject to provincial control, and they allow that on a quota basis. So the province decides as to how many in a given year can be relocated, how many beavers. And, and there has to be a process that the trapper would have to undertake and undergo in determining whether that's something that they can pursue or not.
Thank you for that. Counselor Fox?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, one of my first questions was, the comments was on the relocation issue. Relocation is a problem. It's not just a given. You can't trap a beaver and then just relocate it, or assume it to be relocated, because there are, there are a series of management issues that have to be gone through. Is there, Mr. Seffy elaborated, is there anything else related to that?
No, I think that, that covers it, yeah. You need a permit with the province.
In the, you mentioned something when you talked about levelers, that there was a flow factor.
Yes.
Levelers only work with certain flow factors. Low flow, medium flow, or significant flow?
Found in a low-flow area, they work best, because they will, they'll trap set, they'll trap debris and, and whatnot, and they will restrict the flow. So if you have a detention pond where you can require high flows into that pond, you will be restricting the inlets.
And what about, is there a different perspective on fish-bearing streams versus non-fish-bearing streams?
No, none that I know of.
None that you're aware of?
No.
Because some of our, some of our streams are more fish-bearing, or flow into more fish-bearing streams than others, and I just wondered if there was anything. In talking to somebody who's pretty knowledgeable, they described the beaver population in the township of Langley as prolific. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that, based on the amount of sites that we've, that I showed you, yes.
And based upon the fact that on 16th Avenue, Sunday morning at 9:45, there was a dead beaver?
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, at 246th. Sorry, 244th.
Okay.
Lying on the side of the road. There's a lot of beaver activity in that area, it's a lowland, and yes, he was lying there. But, you know, and I guess what I'm trying to point out is, we have a prolific population, and the, this population of beavers is looking at expanding, and when they expand, they expand into individual property owners and onto public property, and hence the, the result in this particular case, and I don't think it's the first nor the last, it'll be killed and roadkill in that particular area. You showed a couple of slides. One I'm particularly interested in, go back if you don't mind. Keep going, keep going, keep going. One more, there. That's my neighbor. My house is right behind that barn right there.
Oh, okay.
I know this property extremely well. The issue here is, this is created by beaver dams. This particular, that barn there has horses that are worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. She can't move her horses in and out to horse shows, Thunderbird, or anywhere else, when the water's that high, because that actually, that water, that's actually low compared to what it can be, but it, it's higher than the base of the, the horse trailer. And the horse trailer, of course, the horses can feel it, and they don't like it. So you can see the implications here, because this actually affects her business. I've actually seen a car stalled in that, sitting there, dead, because the water's so high, the engine stalled, and the person had to get out. So, I mean, in that case, it's affecting an individual's income, a source of income. And it's unfortunate, but that's the end result if, if beavers aren't, you know, if they... In, in this particular case, and if you go back to the map, you can see the red dot where you're, where it's, it's working, and there's pond levelers in the area right there. It's the red dot on the very bottom in the middle.
Yes.
And, but, they still are so active in that area. And I can tell you that Counselor Davis and I have been there up to our waists in cold, cold water hand-bombing dams, because it just, that water at the, at the person's property line, and the one, the picture you showed on 232nd, it, it's compromising the road safety and the road structure and so on, so... So anyway, I just wanted to thank you for coming. I wanted to, I noted the changes you made in the policy. I think it tightens up our policy. We have a good set of guidelines. They were there. I don't know why Mr. Nelson hadn't, and I asked him the question, why didn't you phone and talk to our staff? I mean, you've obviously worked with our staff at, or heated, or someone from the Furbearers work at Horn Pit and, and the other two sites. Why didn't you phone and ask and see what? Because the documentation we've got, I think, is, is pretty sound. And it, it reflects, if you do a comparator with Mission, and, sorry, which he was doing, I think it's pretty, pretty much the same. I think you guys, and I say that, talk to each other. In the, in the beaver management business, you talk to each other, because if there is a best practice, you probably communicate that between each jurisdiction, I would assume. And including up north, where some of the beaver issues in the, in the Chilcotin, Caribou area are rather substantial as well, so... Just to closing, I did send an article about the Canadian beaver in Argentina. And if you Google "Argentina beaver," you'll find that the Canadian beaver... That's what you do. You'll, you will find that the Canadian beaver is the biggest nuisance in Argentina going today. You know what? Counsel Arnesson, you just mentioned exactly the problem. There's no natural predator, even in the township of Langley, for a beaver. The beaver has actually the most secure life of anywhere, because he can go into a pond, not a coyote can get him, nothing. There, that's the biggest problem. They don't have a natural predator.
Right. Counselor Davis? Let's see if you can add to this enlightening discussion.
You shoot, you shovel, and you shut up.
It's the farmer way.
I, I shouldn't have said that, because I like the beavers. I like them, and, um... Okay. So here's the thing, I have a couple, Kevin, or Mr. Larson, you commented law, lawful control. Those are the words you used, and I guess I might have been, I wasn't paying attention. You used that, could you talk about the lawful control when we take lawful control?
So the, the federal and provincial legislation gives the municipality the ability to manage beavers within their limits, obviously through legal means such as doing our proactive, integrated approach, the last step being trapping, if, if all else fails, so that's all that means.
Okay. So with the new, I have the old one here, and the new one's not that much, it's, it's only two... But you've got in here 4.4. Management of beaver shall consist of a series of progressive, coordinated, and non-invasive steps, including the following. Is that, do we have to do all that first? Because that may take a year or two, you know, to monitor, tree wrap, install, you know? Or can we use what you just said there, lawful control?
So it is the township's approach and, and in our guidelines to undertake this progressive approach. There is some discretion in that. So for example, when the public safety is at risk, we would have the ability to, to perhaps skip a step.
Such is the road's flooding, and you can see if you take that dam out, it's going to go down two feet. That sort of a thing.
Possibly, yes.
Possibly, okay. Okay. The other question is, we've got another one here. Related policy 3.1, private property entering and working on, is, and it just says that. So is there, is there something else there that's missing on my report?
My understanding through your worship, that the private property policy, really the, the premise behind that policy is that township will not go and do work on private property, that, that issues on private property are a private property issue. Of course, there are some exceptions to that rule, again, when public safety is at risk. But I think that policy is just there to point out the fact that if neighbor A is flooding neighbor B, the township will not automatically go in and try to deal with the beaver problem. That's a private property issue.
Yeah, okay, so I, I see. But it's now put in the policy. It's now put in the, in the council policy for, for nuisance.
Yes, it's a related policy.
It wasn't in there before.
Correct.
Okay. So like you say, that policy is just so that, it just covers, that's kind of a liability thing. Hey, you know, this is, if you've got a problem, we can't go in until we get permission and this sort of thing.
Yes, three, worship, and it also, it also clarifies for a private property owner, if they want to see this policy, they can, they can refer to the other policy that it references and say, okay, well, the purpose of this policy is not to deal with the beaver on my property. It's really to protect the public infrastructure and public works.
Okay, so we still have enough, we still have the words in there, lawful, lawful control, and we still have, like, it, it doesn't weaken the policy. It just makes it a little more beaver-friendly, but we still can get to the job if we need to, I think. It looks that way. Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, how many trappers do we have on our trapper list?
Apparently, we have one contractor.
We just have one? We just have one contractor. Are there other contractors out there that we could add?
It's, uh, from what I know through your worship, uh, it's, it's very difficult and becoming more difficult in the province of BT, BC to get a trapping license. Um, so there's a very select few, uh, group of people that have them, and apparently they're handed down from generation to generation.
Okay.
Um, so you or I probably could not go out and get a trapping license.
Okay.
I know that our, our guidelines did at one time have a, a short list of two contractors, but it sounds like that list has shortened to one for whatever reason.
Okay. Now, the one trapper that is on our list, is that trapper able to do live trapping and euthanasia as opposed to leg hold or neck hold traps?
Through your worship, since I don't know for certain, I'm not going to answer you.
Not going to answer, okay.
If I could just add something, I believe leg hold traps are banned, aren't they? Is that? Uh, yeah, there are no leg hold traps allowed anymore.
Okay, well, what was the trap that killed the beaver? A neck hold?
Yeah, and that's, and, and there's also, uh, maybe, I'll just follow up on that, uh, for that type of trap that we saw in that picture. That is, would that not be a more humane way? Because it's instantaneous, it's cervical dislocation, and it's, it's something that's more instantaneous.
I believe the purpose of this trap is for an instantaneous.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand, is that the trappers are using humane traps already. Okay, thanks. Councillor Anderson?
Um, thank you. Yes, I do appreciate the fact that, um, you've gone back with this information with the discussion that we had at council last time, so I do appreciate that. Um, you know, I might as well just be out front and say I'm not in favor of trapping beavers unless there was absolutely no other alternative. So I do see that there are provisions that you've written into our policy that are helpful in, in the sense that they do provide, uh, a, a measure of other language that talks about what other, uh, methodologies could be used. Um, I guess my problem is, is maybe more the fact that on balance, if I read the information, it, it doesn't contain anything for the public to look at to say, for example, it just, if I'm looking at it, it's as somebody who's already predetermined in a way, I've got to get rid of the beavers, I need to management, manage them, but it doesn't look at anything about the positive attributes of beavers in our community. And maybe you think that that's not important, but I do think that that's something that people need to consider, because it's not always the case that, you know, if we continue, for example, if we have these management problems, one alternative is to look at, okay, let's just, you know, resolve it by taking the problem out. Uh, my perspective is somewhat different. I think we need to look at riparian areas in a different way. And I don't suggest at all that we don't consider public safety and our infrastructure. I think that we manage that very well. Uh, but I would be more interested in, in looking at the context in which we make these decisions and make those kind of determinations as, for example, the language in section four point five, where it says where no effective means of preventing or controlling the potential damage, I would insert have proved successful. Because to me, that kind of underlines that this is a progressive approach that we're taking. It means that we're mandating that there have to be some degree of consideration. I'm not necessarily saying that you have to do the tree wrapping and you have to always use levelers, but the degree to which we feel comfortable with the fact that we are doing some due diligence, uh, and we are looking to public safety to try and find that right balance. Um, and, and just also the fact that, um, you know, I, I think it should be personally a little bit more educative about all the different options that are available to homeowners. So, um, I'm not necessarily sure that, you know, these are, it's like A or B. Obviously, you've got the levelers, but, um, there are such things as exclusion fences and combination fences. If, if I could just refer to some of the photos that you've provided, I think that there is some instances there where you could have had a combination of a exclusion fence and maybe a leveler that would have been more appropriate. But, you know, I'm not a beaver expert by any means. And, um, you know, certainly, if somebody's going to bring a motion to export some predatory animals to Argentina for the beavers, uh, you know, I, I, we, we intervene too much in nature as far as I'm concerned. And so I think we need to try and find the right balance. So I think you've done a good job, but I, I would just like to see the language improve slightly to, just to reference the fact that we have, um, tried the methodologies, um, that we think are viable. And, and that as a very last resort, that we only make that determination at the end that we have to exterminate beavers.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. I want to thank you very much for that presentation to the both of you. It was, um, beaver, you know, one-on-one. It was, uh, very informative. And to, to see what we are doing, and I truly understand that it is a last resort, and it's already in our, in our policy, and certainly, um, do appreciate the work you do. It's not easy, but, uh, it's, it's being done, so thank you. All right, move on to, there are no delegations, so we move straight to... I'm sorry, um, I'm moving on to reports to council. F1, is control of nuisance animals, um, policy update. Councillor Fox moves it. Is there a second or, uh, councillor Whitmarsh? Uh, okay, I'm, I'm going to clear this, okay, if anybody has anything, sorry, I have to clear it from the last. Councillor Richter?
Um, yeah, I'd like to amend four point five. Um, to read at the very end, they may be removed by live trapping and relocation or humane euthanasia.
Okay, is there a second to that? Councillor Anderson seconds that. I'll get my agenda back. Uh, did you wish to speak to that, councillor Richter?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I don't think any kind of trap, conabear, or whatever it is, it's not humane. So, uh, live trap them and, uh, put them to sleep like we do with other animals.
Trying to catch up to that, um, nuisance policy update. So which section was that?
That was four point five on page eleven, number four point five, so it's in addition to the end, saying if the last resort is to trap them, fine, but trap them live and, and euthanase, euthanize them humanely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Fox?
Yeah, my only concern with that is we're telling a trapper how to do his job. And I'm not sure we do, we, we want to do that. I realize, I realize that the concern is obviously, um, with the, uh, killing. But we have to realize too, that in most circumstances, in fact, the substantial number, the individual, individuals don't know they're even being trapped, because the trap is underwater. The be, the beaver management person, the licensed individual, uh, deals with the beaver. Uh, our staff don't deal with them, and I think we're trying to tell, we're trying to over-micromanage here, uh, a person who's a licensed trapper by the province of British Columbia. If we were to put an adendum that we write to the province of British Columbia and tell them to change their pa, trapper regulations, I think that's a different matter. But here, we're micromanaging how the trapper does their job. So I think, I think they're two different things. If we, if there was a subsequent motion to send a letter to the province of British Columbia, Ministry of the Environment, and request that they can, uh, consider more humane methodologies in their licensed trappers, I'd fully support that. But I think to put it in a policy becomes a bit, uh, micromanagement.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, one thing that hasn't come out as a result of this, and why I support councillor Richter's motion, is that there are a lot of unintended consequences of using these traps. There's a lot of wildlife, dogs, uh, um, sad to say, sometimes children that can get caught in these traps, and that's the reality of using them. If we didn't have these traps, then those kind of things could be prevented. So it may seem like, sorry for the pun, overkill, but I really think that, you know, we need to look at viable alternatives. Um, you know, I, I'd personally prefer to euthanize an animal, sadly. I know it's difficult to relocate, and the province has to be involved. But, um, you know, I would prefer to do that, because I don't see that we're the appropriate judges of what is, you know, okay to, uh, to exterminate a beaver. And I, I couldn't really say it was humane to break something's neck like that, because, I don't know, it could get its paw caught. It could, any, anything could happen to it. And I've seen pictures of wildlife that have been stuck in these traps, and I just don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. Um, I think the motion is, um, to have that as our, as our only option for extermination is problematic. We just heard from our staff, who, by the way, thank you for the report, I think they're doing a great job, uh, in managing the situation we have. We just heard from the staff that there's one trapper, and, um, that they're not sure our trap, this trapper who is our contractor can even do live trapping. So I think maybe if we change the motion to say that, um, the preference would be for live trapping, but I don't think we should, uh, eliminate, um, the option that might be the only option that the trapper and staff have to solve the problem. So, uh, I'm not going to support the motion, because I think it's too prescriptive. I think we need to let the people who do the job do the job that they are doing. And, um, by us providing that direction that, um, you know, a live trap would be, um, a first option or first alternative, but I'm not prepared to take away, um, I'm not prepared to take away the options that we have right now.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I'd, uh, I, I also agree with councillor Qualley that I think this is too restrictive. I think the definition of what is humane should not necessarily be decided by this council. I think we should leave that open to those who are experts in the, in the area. Maybe, uh, the province might determine what's humane. Uh, but, uh, I don't think we should be putting in our policy some restrictive, uh, guidelines around trapping when we don't actually, we're not the experts in any, in any regard. So I think I'm happy with the way it was written, and I would propose we leave it as is.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Um, with regards to telling the trapper how to do his job, the trapper is a contractor. He runs a business, and we have the right to tell him, if we hire him, how we want him to carry out his business in our township. Uh, I mean, wha, what do we do when people build roads? If somebody comes in and says, oh, I don't like asphalt, I prefer concrete. No, when we put a contract out to somebody, we say this is the job, and this is what we want, this is how we want it done. And if you can't do the job the way we want it done, then don't bother applying for the contract. It's the same principle. And I'm saying that we should be looking at humane ways of doing this job first, and not falling to the most expedient way to get rid of a beaver, which I suspect is what happens in most cases.
Councillor Long?
Worship, I guess I'm troubled about the wording, because we're mixing up humane with, uh, with the trapping, and I, I wouldn't mind having it read back, but I guess, you know, one would hate to think that other animals and kids could get stuck in the traps, so I mean, there's that about it. But, so there's two different things. One is the type of trapping, and the other one is, uh, is this, is this word of humane? Because I don't, I don't know which one. I think if you, if you live trap a beaver and keep him caged up, and then euthanize him, that can be very stressful and distressing to the animal too. So it's not a very comfortable situation to be in, your worship, because we don't know enough about, uh, the trapping. So I wonder if, if staff could comment? Is, is live trapping used a lot? Is, would that be an issue? And I, either way, I think the word, um, humane has to come out of there, because I don't think there's any, well, I shouldn't say there isn't a humane way to kill an animal, but, you know, that's up to interpretation, isn't it? The staff, any, have any comment about the live trapping versus, uh, whatever?
I don't know if Mr. Rule can comment, your worship, in terms of other practices in other jurisdictions, in terms of live trapping?
Yeah, so there, so that probably explains it too. We can't just make a motion on the fly here without consulting our contractors. So I would suggest we just adopt the, the policy as submitted, and, uh, probably the safest way to go.
Thank you. Yeah, on the amendment, I just want to say, uh, we're, here we're trying to determine what humane is, and I'd like to read something I dug up very quickly on the internet. It's the Agreement on International Humane Trapping Standards. On June first, nineteen ninety-nine, the Agreement on International Humane Trapping Standards came into effect, uh, signed by the Government of Canada, the European Committee, and the Government of the Russian Federation. Uh, and this agreement serves to protect Canada's access to European fur market, and thus protect the wild fur industry in Canada. It goes on to say that, uh, the, um, what does this mean for British Columbian trappers? The agreement, uh, applies to most fur bearers trapped in BC, including beaver, bobcat, coyote, ermine, a bunch of them. And that, uh, that it lists for conservation, and it says that using killing traps. Now, putting a trap, putting a beaver in a, in a cage and leaving it there until the trapper has opportunity to come by, and it is regulated, they have to come by regularly and, and, and check those traps. Uh, if they're live trapping, uh, certainly adds stress. I agree with councillor Long. Uh, in, in my business, we, we deal with animal husbandry, and, and, uh, we're always concerned about humane transport of our, of our poultry and, and how they're slaughtered at the plant. That, that all has to be done humanely. However, by saying that a trap that has been approved by the Government of Canada and through this agreement, that is a humane way, that is, uh, and really to be humane, it needs to be quick, and, uh, so that they don't suffer. And that's the key. Uh, suffering in a, in a live trap, you know, I'm not the expert, but certainly, it, it doesn't... There are traps that are approved, and it's regulated, and it's, uh, regulated by federal government. To be humane, to make policies here, uh, is, we're stepping way out of our expertise and out of our jurisdiction. Councillor Anderson?
Um, thank you, worship. Well, now that we're all Googled in, I think I'd like to refer to one of the original documents that I found from the BCSPCA, talking about best management practice. So maybe at a future council meeting, we'd like to consider what humane means in terms of what they call pest control. Because there is a UBC Animal Welfare Program that has identified, I guess, the various protocols and what they consider, uh, to be viable and humane. Maybe if we're looking for a standard to apply, and if we don't know what humane means, because the meaning can be so broad, I can only imagine that the Canadian government has lots of reasons to put forward why trapping is humane. There are large pop, portions of our population who rely on that for their, uh, for their bread and butter. So anyways, I, I just think that maybe what we need to do is to put the baby to bed. We'll just, um, endorse or not this policy, and maybe continue as a discussion, uh, going forward, going, uh, you know, giving some broad, uh, analysis of it at some point in the future. Because I don't, I agree, we maybe can't solve the whole issue, and maybe there's some more research that needs to be done or due diligence in terms of, uh, what would work the best for us in our situation. And, uh, you know, that might be a good way to go.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I see no further discussion. I'm calling the question. On the amendment to, um, can you read the amendment, please, Ms. Bauer? This is on the amendment.
So the amendment is to add to section four point five of the Control of Nuisance in Animals policy, be amended to read as follows, "When no other effective means of preventing or controlling the potential damage and risk to public safety due to the activities of these animals is available, they may be removed by live trapping for relocation or humane euthanasia."
So I'll call the question. And the amendment fails. Councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, mayor froze, councillor Qualley, councillor Davis, councillor Long opposed. We're on to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. And that carries unanimously. We move on to F2, and that's the proposed expansion of Fraser Sewage Area. Could I have a motion? Councillor Fox, seconded by councillor Anderson. Any discussion on F2? Councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Uh, through you, maybe to Mr. Seffy or staff. Um, we keep getting these one-offs, and I sit on the Metro Vancouver Utilities Committee. And, um, I just think that when we get these, when we get these one-offs, uh, one after the after the other, I just, I, I don't feel it's the most effective way of trying to, to, um, look at the bigger picture here. I'm, um, if you can go back to that, that map there, um, you can see the purple guys. The purple ones, um, are already, have connections to sewer. Could we petition, uh, the other properties there, so we can do a more holistic, um, application in here? Uh, I'm just thinking, okay, so thirteen seventy-three, uh, makes our application today, and another month, you know, thirteen thirteen or thirteen seventy-eight, and we just keep walking down the street one piece at a time. Any response to that?
Uh, your worship, this is, uh, a consequence or a product, if you will, of, of the, the regional scheme in terms of the, uh, the control, not necessarily with respect to land use and planning, but also with respect to the improvements that are necessary as part of the, the growth in the region with respect to our, uh, regional assets in terms of, uh, regional treatment facilities, et cetera. So this is exactly what the region, what would like to see, is essentially approving of a case on a case-by-case basis. on a case-by-case basis on individual properties, individual merits, if you will. So, each property will have to demonstrate that in fact there is no other, well, first of all, that there's a need, that there's an impact to the environment in terms of either the failure of the system or the elevated water table. And then following that, demonstrate that no other means are available other than connection. And that's exactly what the regional scheme contemplates and that's what they want.
Yeah, I just, I just see it, I mean, we're going to get there. I mean, we've got, this is on top of the Brookswood, south part of the Brookswood acre. We're going to get there. All these people are going to be connected up someday, probably within the next five to 10 years. So, do you expedite that or do you do it more holistically? I just think that it might be to the advantage. But we can leave it as it is. It just means one at a time when they come through.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on F2. That carries unanimously. We want F3, Syrurgol Childen Commission Application Number 100312. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, second. Have a second. Counsel Qualley, discussion on F3. Seeing none, I'll call the question on F3. That carries. Counsel Arnison and Counsel Davis opposed. And we move on to correspondence. So, there's one, two, all the way to five. Okay, Counsel Fox moves all five. Counsel Davis seconds. On receipt, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. Just to go through, are there any, okay, there's Counsel Long.
Yeah, I'd like to move G1 on the daffodil campaign that we approve their request to campus.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Fox. Discussion on that. Seeing it on, I'll call the question on G1. Carries unanimously. And G2, consider endorsing. Any discussion there?
Oh, sorry, G2?
G2, yeah, if anybody wants. Sure, do you want to push a button? Thank you. Counsel Arnison.
Yeah, I'd be prepared to support receipt, but I'd like some further information regarding this as a proposition because I see some interesting policy discussions going on around it. So, yeah, just receive for information.
And G3, so we don't need to refer, thank you. Yeah, there's no voter action. Okay, so with that, unless there's anything else, I will clear.
Do we have G4 yet?
Oh, yeah, it's sort of, we'll zip through there. Counsel Long.
Well, your worship, I wonder if we could refer the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and they have an agreement with the Railway Association of Canada involving proximity issues for rail development near railways. It's just a policy, it's not bylaws or anything. It's being adopted around Canada. Many of us on council may have had presentations through FCM and UBCM and the LMLGA. And rather than making a motion now, I would move that we, that staff examine the document and maybe recommend back to us that we adopt it. And I've also sent an email to each council member, a copy of the proximity guidelines.
Okay, do we need a motion or?
I'd like a motion to refer it to staff.
Don't put that in another, oh, yes, wrong here.
No, I'm putting it under, well, because of the public rail safety week.
Okay, so your motion, if you could just provide your motion again to?
So, in relation to G4, I move that we refer the FCM RAC proximity guidelines to staff for adoption by the Township of Langley.
Staff to report back to council?
Yeah. Yeah. Does that make, does that work?
Does that work, Mr. Backen? Seconder? Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion on G4, on that motion. Seeing, Counsel Davis?
Does this have anything to do with the railroad, the Canadian standards? Because if you're going to develop, maybe Counsel Fox, if you could, you know, we're rail safety standards of each individual crossing, this has got nothing to do with it?
Well, in that there's trains involved, but it's not directly.
Oh, okay. So, I, okay, so we're sending it back so staff can come back to us and then we can look at it and then adopt it.
With the hope of adopting it.
With the hope of adopting it, yeah. Okay, okay, no problem. Thanks.
You know, further discussion, call the question on G, on that motion. It's not exactly G4, but the motion, Counsel Long's motion. It carries unanimously. And anything on G5? It's just communications, okay? Minutes of committees, of which there are seniors, council priorities, agriculture and economic. There are three on H1. Counsel Qualley moves and seconder. Counsel Fox, any discussion on the receipt of those? Seeing none, H1, call the question. Carries unanimously. And H2, Senior Advisory Committee recommended motion. Sir?
I'll move.
Counsel Qualley moves, H2, seconder. H2, Counsel Fox, discussion H2. Seeing none, I'll call the question. It carries unanimously. H3, Agriculture Advisory Economic Enhancement Committee, and there is a motion to invite the Institute of Sustainable Food Systems to present at a council meeting. Take it. Counsel, is there Counsel Richter, seconder? Counsel Davis, discussion H3?
Yes.
Do you want to push your button, please?
Yeah.
And I'll put you on. Thank you, Counsel Richter.
Yes. This is a report that came to the Ag Advisory Committee, Ag, Agricultural Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee last week, and it's the result of a four-year project undertaken by a number of different, yeah, you can pass that down, by a number of different researchers, but mainly Kent Mullenex from Quantland Polytechnic. And Township of Langley was one of the first groups that, to support this particular study. He came to and spoke to us four years ago and only seven municipalities put money into this project. We were one of them. But the project covered the southwest B.C. food production area. So, basically from Powell River through to the edge of the Fraser Valley. A fascinating study. What they've come up with is a model now, like a computational model, that's based strictly on data that is available. Now, there are some gaps in that data and he spent a great deal of time going into that data. But they looked at the situation now and then they used that model to project into the year 2050. There is no other model of anything like this anywhere else in Canada but here. So, it's a pretty astounding model. And what they found was that in 2011, let me just find my results, which is the baseline year, there was 165,000 hectares of arable land and only 101 hectares were in active production, serving a population of 2.7 million people. Of the food that's produced on this land, forty, that means that we have 40% self-reliance on food. So, only 40% of what we're producing in food, we are consuming in this region. And we have about $1.8 billion in food imports coming out of here, which is okay for now except that when we look forward to the year 2050, the population will increase in this area to 4.3 million people. And our ability to rely on the food, if we don't change anything, if we continue to grow what it is that we're growing now, and basically we're producing a lot of chicken and blueberries, then our ability to feed ourselves in this region will drop to 28%. Now, the model also looks at environmental impacts, it looks at manure management, it looks at a number of different factors. It's a very, very complicated model. But essentially, if we changed our crop mix in this area that's covered by the study, we can actually increase our self-reliance on food to 56% by the year 2050. Now, this model, and one of the things that was astounding, and I hope I wrote this number down, he said in southwest B.C., we spend $8 billion a year on food, a year on food. And 98% of this $8 billion goes out of this province. It goes to head offices down in the states, head offices in other provinces, but not staying in this province. So, there's a huge economic impact potential for creating more, more jobs in the agriculture sector at the same time as we are creating more food in the agriculture sector to feed our population here. So, he also said that because this model is now in place, the model can be applied to different areas in the area. So, we could take this model and actually apply it to Langley Township and figure out in Langley Township how much food we are producing that is consumed within the township, how much we are shipping out in the year 2050, how much will we need to produce, what kinds of crops will we have to produce. One of the members of the Ag Advisory Committee sits on the Sustainable Agriculture Foundation and she was really excited about this because she said, "The number one question that the Sustainable Ag Foundation, our township Sustainable Ag Foundation gets, is what crops should I be growing?" And this study will be able to tell existing farmers, new farmers, people who are buying land here, what crops they can be growing that will be, that will be profitable in the future. It also looked at water use, like a whole bunch of things. So, needless to say, the committee was extremely excited about this study and has two recommendations. The first one is that we invite Dr. Mullenex to come and talk to council, to do his presentation to council, so the council fully understands the potential of this model that's been developed. And the second thing is because we have been a pioneer with Dr. Mullenex and his group, like we got in on the ground floor and he was quite upfront, he said, "The fact that we were the first to put money into this study brought those other municipalities on board." So, we would like to continue, or the Ag Advisory Committee would like us to continue to be pioneers in this by asking Dr. Mullenex and his associates to apply this model specifically to Langley to see where we can go going forward. So, this, of course, would fit with our agriculture viability strategy as well. So, the first motion is, could we please invite Dr. Mullenex to come and talk to, talk to us about this groundbreaking research that's been done?
Thank you. I have a question. Did a part of the study look at the other side of the agricultural, there's the producer and then there's the customer?
Well, and that's, that's part of what he said. He said, "We've got to start looking at," and this is another issue that Ag Advisory has been wrestling with, processing more here locally. Because right now, we're producing and shipping out for processing.
The real issue I see is that the grocery store chains are buying wherever it's cheap and so they're buying from California and Mexico and wherever else. So, we can grow great farmland out in Delta where the farmers can't make any money because they grow their product and it doesn't sustain them. So, because we're buying, they're buying elsewhere. And that's, I think, the root of it. I think our farmers are really, really entrepreneurial and ingenious and will come up with great, great ways to grow produce, but if they can't sell it here and.
Well, and, you know, I think those are fair questions to ask him. I can't answer.
No, I know.
I didn't do the study, but, yeah.
I just asked if it was part of the study because it certainly is the very important side to it.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And that's why poultry and dairy is successful in the northern land because it's supply managed. There's some rules and you can't just ship it in. Anyways, thank you. So, I see no further discussion. I'll call the question on that. That was H3. And it carries unanimously. And H4, and this is Counsel Richter, did you?
Yeah, that council consider undertaking a sustainable food system study for the Township of Langley, conducted by the Institute for Sustainable Food Systems, costing approximately $25,000 and to be completed in a six-month timeframe.
Just on, just on the motion, would that, the funding comes from, should be in the motion, where would the funding come from? Is it council contingency or is there?
I, we could take it from council contingency. We could refer it to staff. I mean, I really like to get this done.
If it's a council contingency, do we want to add that to the motion? Fund from council contingency?
Your worship, just so we're aware that when council makes a motion, it automatically come from council contingency unless there's a contrary direction.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Okay, so it's been moved, sir, seconder. Counsel Davis seconds. Discussion, Counsel Long.
So, would we not get the presentation first and then, or do we, because we already made a motion to get a presentation, right? Same group, is it not?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no. And, but I'm just saying, with this motion, the Ag Advisory is, thinks this study is so important that they'd like council to consider doing a study. I mean, you can defer this if you want until after we've done the presentation, but I'd kind of like to get our foot in the door with him before the other municipalities start lining up.
Is there not a fund, through you, to Mr. Backen, for these initiatives? Yeah, the Farm Strategy, the Sustainable Agriculture Fund, Mr. Backen slash fund.
There's various funds, your worship, but I usually, nothing comes to mind if you wanted us to check. We certainly could put it that way.
I think this is an appropriate funding envelope that we could use, yeah. Counsel Davis?
The David Davis, the, isn't, like, this is education. Is there anything that falls in the agricultural strategy?
Agricultural foundation?
Not, well, there's that, too. But I don't know if that's their MO. But do, on our agricultural, you know, the book.
Viability.
The agricultural strategy viability, is there not one there? It's not something there that they could, we could use? Because this would fall under education. Like, we put 125,000 a year, don't we, from that to be able to use?
Your worship, there is an annual operating allowance for the Ag Viability Strategy of about $130,000.
Oh, okay.
This, it's an annual requirement to implement a strategy. If council does not wish to fund this through the contingency, then that's a potential source.
Well, okay. Either way, somewhere, we all have to eat.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion, H4? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries unanimously. And is there any other business?
Yes.
Counsel Fox.
Yeah, just a couple of things. On the February 23 distribution, there was a rather interesting request from John Aldig for somebody to start a roller derby. Could we just ask maybe Parks Recreation Culture to look at this and see if we have a source of concrete floor, polished concrete floor that the mainland misfits could practice on? It seems a rather odd way to go about things, but we'll, we'll accept that it's rather odd and move on.
Absolutely. Let's into it.
Yeah. Just, I just wanted to thank staff for the memo updates on the We Are Canada air discharge. It's in today's distribution list. I haven't read it thoroughly, but I noticed that they've updated us on the application that's there and made their own comments relative to the application. And also to Janet Shaw, who they've fixed her, the curbs up in Murrayville that she brought to, to our attention. And also, we've got a couple of emails on the Langley School District transition to middle schools. I really don't want it to get into a middle school discussion at the Township Council table. I appreciate the information, but I don't think it's our purview to discuss whether James Kennedy or any other school becomes a middle school, so.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. In the distribution on February 23, there was a letter from the B.C. Association of Farmers Markets, asking us to send a letter to Minister Lake, asking him to continue with the nutrition coupon program. I would like to refer that, I'd like to make a motion that we send that letter to Minister Lake. There's a lot of residents in our community who took advantage of that over the last few years and it's important to see it continue.
You move that, you move it? Is there a seconder? Counsel Davis seconds. Discussion on that. Seeing none, Counsel Qualley's motion. Lost my place. What do I label that? Is it old? Sir?
I1.
I1, thanks. Oops. Close resolution. Oops, closed results, I'll do it again. Call the vote. I won, I've called the question. There we go. That carries unanimously. Any other business?
Terminate.
Seeing none, Counselor Davis moves to terminate. And the seconder would be Counselor Qualley. All those in favor? Close, and that's carried, thank you.